Good evening and welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District School Committee Meeting of November 25th, 2025. If everyone would please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. Okay, first, it being holiday week, you can see that we sort of have a skeleton crew here, and we do have some members who had or have other obligations and may have to leave early depending on the length of the meeting. So I wanted to just start by explaining that to the folks in the audience. First item on the agenda is public statement from the school committee. Stephanie?
Thank you. A statement was prepared, but under advisement from the school district's attorney, I move to table this agenda item.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I don't have a... Oh, okay. I don't know if this works so well. Is this working now? Okay, thank you. I think we can take other steps. I know that it is disappointing that we can't speak on things, but if we were moving in the direction of what's best for students, which I know that everybody in this room wants, I think undermining any action or process that we would choose to move forward with would be not advisable. And there are other things that we can talk about or move for the next meeting that will indicate that we are moving towards transparency.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. It's a motion for audits for three different systems. Hold on, let me get them out. To be placed on the next agenda: a governance and internal controls audit, a payroll staff and HR compliance audit, and a procedural, sorry, a procurement and regional agreement compliance audit. I'd like that to be put on the next agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I think the only thing I would say is maybe put that in an email to whomever is the next chair, just so they have it.
Yes, if you want to have a discussion, I can go in. I need a second to...
I don't, I don't want a discussion. I just meant, we don't currently, I mean, we're going to reorg. That's our next item.
Okay, and I will. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, item number two on our agenda tonight, reorganization of the school committee.
I make a motion to suspend Robert's rules of order to reorganize the school committee. I second. Did you second?
Yep. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Okay, so Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
You are in charge.
In accordance with our reorg, I'm just going to take nominations in a moment for chairperson, and then I will pass it along to whoever we do nominate and approve for chair. So can I open the floor for nominations for chair of the school committee?
I nominate Ryan Tressel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Marks, thank you. Is there any further nominations? We'll close the nomination for chairperson. Yes, sir. Discussion?
Do we have to confirm that Ryan accepts first?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's, okay.
I do, I do accept the nomination.
Excellent. Yeah, we're going to do a voice vote on this. So Stephanie?
Yes.
TJ?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Steve? Yes. Unanimous. Congratulations.
Okay, so I will now take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Hillary.
I nominate Thomas Roffey.
Second on Hillary.
Okay, second on Hillary from Steve. Is there a second on TJ? Okay, Chris Marks. Okay. So, okay, so any, any further nominations? Okay. So first, we'll go with Hillary Niffen. Okay, okay, all right.
Do, do they have to say whether they accept or not?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's true. Hillary, do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
Mr. Roffey?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to do a voice vote. So name your, your choice for vice chair. Stephanie?
TJ.
TJ?
TJ.
Rosemary?
TJ.
Chris?
TJ.
Hillary?
I'll go with TJ, too.
Okay. I will, I will go with TJ.
Well, since I nominated Hillary, I have to say Hillary.
TJ.
Okay, so TJ Roffey, vice chair. So I'll now open the floor for nominations for secretary.
Mr. Boyce?
I second.
Second, Beth?
I, I will accept the nomination.
Okay. Any other nominations for secretary? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. Stephanie?
Stephen Boyce.
TJ?
Stephen Boyce.
Rosemary?
Mr. Boyce.
Chris?
Stephen Boyce.
Hillary?
Mr. Boyce.
I will also vote for Mr. Boyce.
And Stephen.
Mr. Boyce, I approve that message.
All right, thank you. All right, so now I'm going to open the floor for nominations for treasurer. I saw Stephanie's hand first.
Stephanie Blackman.
Do you accept, Stephanie?
Sure, I was going to make it be Rosemary, but that's fine.
All right, so we need a second for Stephanie. Okay, Beth?
Second.
Beth, second. Okay. Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Stephanie?
Stephanie Blackman.
TJ?
Stephanie.
Rosemary?
Stephanie.
Christopher?
Stephanie Blackman.
Hillary?
Stephanie Blackman.
I'll vote for Stephanie Blackman as well.
Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Okay, congratulations, Stephanie. And I'll take nominations for assistant treasurer.
Rosemary Connerly Hill.
All right, Rosemary Hill is the nomination. We have a second?
Second.
Nobody asked me.
Do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Who was the second on that? That was TJ, thank you. Okay. Any other nominations for assistant treasurer? All right, seeing none. Stephanie?
Mrs. Hill.
TJ?
Rosemary.
Rosemary?
Myself.
Chris?
Rosemary Hill.
Hillary?
Rosemary Hill.
I will vote for Rosemary.
Rosemary.
And Mr. Boyce.
Rosemary.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to open up the floor to public comment. We're going to ask that, as you see, as we've mentioned, that there are, there's a three-minute limit. Try to keep it to three minutes if you can, but I'll try and be flexible because I know people have, you know, prepared remarks. So the first up, we have is Amy Gavin.
Hi, Amy Gavin, 116 Helen Drive, Hanson, Massachusetts. Chair and members of the community, excuse me, chair and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm requesting clarity and transparency on several staffing and governance issues that affect instruction, budget, and accountability. Teach and load for department heads. My understanding is that with the superintendent's approval, department heads may be exempt from teaching a class. I'm asking for the written policy, the criteria used to grant exceptions, and how we ensure instructional impact when leaders do not teach. Structure and compensation. Before we continue funding full-time department head roles, I'm requesting a cost-benefit analysis comparing full-time positions to stipend-based leadership models, including effects on the budget, teacher leadership, and leadership opportunities, and student outcomes. Role overlap and potential conflicts. For example, when one person serves as both department head and curriculum coordinator, evaluation authority, and curricular oversight are combined. This may create a conflict of interest. I'm asking the committee to review safeguards and consider separating these functions. Role clarity. Please provide updated job descriptions for department heads and curriculum coordinators, along with an organizational chart, so we can clearly see responsibilities in any overlap with other roles. Seniority and bumping rights. Finally, if administrators hold teaching licenses or prior seniority, under what circumstances can they bump teachers? I'm requesting a clear explanation of how contracts and policy address this. Thank you for your attention to these questions. I appreciate your commitment to transparency and to decisions that prioritize students in classrooms.
Thank you. So next up, we have Deb Bonney.
Good evening. My name is Deb Bonney, Hanson resident, general cafeteria worker for the school district. While we acknowledge the current financial challenges faced by our district and community, it is important to note that the food service department is self-funded. As a nonprofit organization operating, as a nonprofit organization operating the national school lunch and breakfast programs, our primary financial support comes from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which provides federal reimbursement for each meal served, supplies, and supplies foods. This federal funding is supplemented by state and local funds, as well as revenue generated from à la carte and adult meals sales. With that being said, we would like to respectfully emphasize the importance of our annual salary increase for all cafeteria staff within the Whitman Hansen School District. Our previous contract expired on June 30th, 2025, and we have been operating this year under the previous year's pay rate. This is not the instance, this, this is not the first instance of working without a formal contract for several months or possibly longer at a reduced rate. Additionally, we have not received our annual uniform allowance based on last year's contract for the required work attire. Similar, similar to districts in our region, which are now offering starting wages of $20 per hour or higher, we have dedicated employees who have served this district for over 20 years and are still earning less than the current regional starting rate. This disparity does not accurately represent the value of our work, our commitment, or our experience. Cafeteria staff play a vital role beyond serving food, meals. They foster positive relationships with students. We're committed to creating a welcoming and safe environment while addressing students' nutritional health and emotional needs. Our goal is to ensure that the students receive safe nutritionist meals that support their learning, health, and overall well-being. We take pride in our work, recognizing that students rely on us more than many may realize. It is important to recognize that many students depend on school meals as the primary and most reliable source of daily nutrition. For most students, breakfast and lunch provided at the school are essential in maintaining their health, concentration, readiness to learn. Our efforts directly influence students' well-being, academic success, and overall development. When our contract expired in June, we expected to engage with the administration to negotiate a new agreement. However, this meeting has not yet taken place. We understand that the teacher's contract is typically negotiated first, but it's now nearly December. We kindly request that your, that our contributions be acknowledged and our commitments to both the students and district be respected, while ensuring that our compensation is fair and appropriate. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jennifer Roback.
Jennifer Roback, 879 Bedford Street, Women, Massachusetts. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My concerns remain the same as those I have already voiced repeatedly to this committee. I want to start by saying I came in June to speak of the concerns of the sports cuts. I then again came in October and spoke. In this meeting, I warned of the dangers of cutting the regulation, to regulations versus the profile of students in the classroom. I now stand here and need you to hear me, Mr. Superintendent, who couldn't even show up again. You work for us. Where were you when our students sat here sharing with you their concerns? You work for them, and that is the reason you are here. If your health and mental status is what is in concern, so is theirs. It is time. If you cannot stand here and listen to what your community and our students say, you need to resign. Enough! Now, how did we reach it? How did we come to this point with such a large number of administrative positions? This is ridiculous. Face-to-face student positions were cut. Not one administrator. Not acceptable. Why has the superintendent not been here for the Budget Committee meeting, for last meeting, and now tonight? Enough. Our students deserve leadership. Our students deserve you to be here listening. Additionally, how did the district fail to plan for the salary increases that were newly approved contracts? That makes no sense to me. The individuals affected by the rifts were, were essential to the levels from which they were removed, and the impacts are being felt directly by students and families. My daughter's best friend's son, my daughter's best friend's brother, lost his first-grade teacher. He doesn't want to go to school anymore. He doesn't want to be there. What are we doing to change this? We ask for transparency. We've had nothing. We continue to hear this word, yet the community is left feeling like we are witnessing smoke shows in mirrors. Many of us have brought these concerns to this committee time and time again, but they remain unaddressed. While I understand that you may not be able to respond during public comment, it is your responsibility to address these concerns at subsequent meetings. You also have the ability to amend the agenda when needed, so why not use that option? Why not respond to these serious questions that we all have and deserve answers to? Furthermore, when will you discuss the items that you've tabled from the October meeting, such as the graduation? That affects all of our kids that are graduating. This is not okay. Are you going to approve the eighth-grade trip? Those kids deserve their trip. They shouldn't have that hanging over their heads. These issues cannot sit indefinitely. You must go forward with your job. I am asking this committee to begin responding to the community's outcry for help. Please consider adding follow-up responses to concerns as a standing part of your agenda. We are asking for communication. We're asking for accountability and meaningful action. Thank you for your time. Now is the moment to make change and address these concerns so we can begin to solve these problems facing our district. And Mr. Superintendent, please hear me. I am asking for your resignation tonight.
Thank you. Next up is Reese Chester. Reese Chester? Reese? Okay, sorry.
Hi, school committee. My name is Reese Chester, and I'm a fifth grader at Duval. I wanted to come tonight to share some of the things that have changed at our school since Friday. I had Ms. Hewitt and Ms. Cameron for Wimblock, and I think that both of these amazing teachers helped me grow. Now that these teachers' positions are being eliminated, the students that had these teachers will not have the same experience that I had. We will also no longer have Wimblock, which means we won't be able to finish our book together before our offer visit. There will even be students who won't finish the school year with their own teachers. Some of my friends will no longer have the extra support they need in certain subjects, which does not seem fair. Also, Ms. Tileston being removed is very sad, and she does a great job as a para. She helped a lot of students and also watched our classes when teachers had meetings, which kept the kids safe. Also, I think that Mr. McCleary supplies a lot of help during gym, and Ms. Della was a great addition to the Duval cafeteria. She made lunch fun and was happy and nice to see us. With all of that teaching talent leaving, many students will be sad. Two kindergarten paras that I had will move from kindergarten. Ms. Leary is leaving her kindergarten classroom, and she was a huge help to us during the COVID kindergarten year. She has also been a huge help to every grade, and now that she is leaving, there is no help for students who need it, and the teachers in those classrooms will be alone to help every student. These are some of the changes we've had at Duval since our teachers were cut. Students have been sad, and there has been some crying. It is hard to see other students that are sad and confused because the adults do not seem to have the answers. I hope that school committee can work on other ideas to solve some of these problems so we can bring the teachers we need back to our school. Thank you for letting me speak tonight and for listening.
Thank you, Reese. Next, we have Mark Ruggiero.
Good evening. Mark Ruggiero, 39 Roseway. To be quite honest, I wasn't sure exactly what I wanted to say tonight, and I think listening to some of the opening comments and understanding the direction the committee is going in, I really just want to focus my comments on stressing that I really believe the committee now needs to provide clarity to us as a community as to what exactly are the objectives of the committee. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this right now. Some of this is on the administration, some of it is on the committee, and I think as a community, we're all very confused on who's actually tasked with what, with who's doing what to provide answers. So in that light, I know I've, quite honestly, I posted some of this on Facebook, and I've actually offered up my services if there's an opportunity for the committee to utilize outside help as a consultant over the financial aspect of what we're dealing with. I know the administration has hired Mr. Hyde. I don't know if he's still available. I don't know what's going on with what the administration is working on, but if the committee has an opportunity to hire consultants, it doesn't have to be me. This isn't an ego thing. I shared this online, but there's a lot of smart people in this room that want to help, and right now, there's just a lot of confusion on what the direction we're heading in is. So I offer up my services if that's an option. If it isn't, I would encourage the committee to at least clearly identify from a financial perspective four objectives. The first would be, we need answers on what happened in fiscal year 25. I don't know if there's been a final report on final revenues, final expenses, how the year closed out, but that's a big piece to the equation for us to figure out, how do we get in this position that we're in. So is there an actual financial result of fiscal year 2025 that's available? I also think we need clarity on the fiscal year 26 budget. Who actually compiled the budget? Who was responsible for developing some of the assumptions? And are they even available to talk to right now? Again, as a public community, these are the questions we're really struggling with. The third objective, I think we've started to see a little bit of this in some of the, the meetings we've had, but we need repeatable, consistent reporting out on how are we tracking with actual revenue and expenses in the current year compared to the budget. That should just be a programmable, repeatable piece on the agenda every time the committee meets, that we have clarity into, are we hitting now the new numbers that we thought we were going to hit? And then if we can get all those moving pieces in check, the fourth item would be, we need a review of the governance framework. How did we get where, where we are right now? What is the role of the committee? What is the role of the administration? Where were those gaps? Where were the, you know, the pitfalls that led us into the position we're in? Again, I, I do a lot of this in my day job. I report to boards. I think I have a good understanding on what a board objective is versus what administration objective is. So if there's assistance that I can be of, I offer up my services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have Richard Rosen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I should say congratulations. I'll send my condolences because I feel like you are now sitting on the deck of the Titanic. My name is Richard Rosen. I'm a third-generation Whitman resident. My father graduated Whitman High School. I graduated Whitman Hansen, as did my kids. I was on the school council, not the school committee. I was on the school council for a number of years when Bob Gay was the superintendent. I have an idea of what's going on, and I don't like it. And I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, the damage control stinks. There is not enough openness, which I get it. I understand that there are certain things you can say and you can't say. I also don't think that it's a funding issue at this point. I think it's a spending issue at this point. When I was before the Board of Selectmen last Tuesday to speak, I spoke for several minutes, and I suggested that I could cut a million dollars out of your budget in 10 minutes without laying off a teacher. I'm going to amend that tonight to say I could cut a million and a half dollars out of your budget in a half hour and not lay off a teacher. So I agree with some of the speakers before me on things that can be done, but as long as the superintendent is still employed in this district and his assistants, this is... and his assistants, this is like the tail wagging the dog. And someone said that, "He works for you." Yeah, he does. And the fact is, he needs to be fired. I'll go one step further. If he takes responsibility for the problem, which he was on TV saying, then it should lie with him, and he should be ousted, as well as his associates. I believe that if you made those cuts, and it's not an easy thing to do. I get it. I understand where you're all coming from. It's not an easy position that you're in. God, I wouldn't want to sit at that table for all the tea and china. But you have to do something, and you have to do it soon to heal this community. You need to restore all the people that have been rifted and replace it, some of those funds, with getting rid of some of the administration because we all know that you have about 30 more administrators than you need in this district. And I just want to say, I would just like to say that there should be a forensic audit. Not of the teachers. I don't care about that. They don't make enough money as it is, from them up, for the administration. I would call for zero-based budget for next year. So you're not coming in and you're not asking for 15% or 14%, which you guys always do. Let's start at zero and build a budget. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I want to commend the kids for the job that they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Next, we have Sean Kane.
Thank you, Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street, member of the Whitman Select Board. As elected officials, we're trying to help during this difficult time. We don't want to pit departments against each other. We don't want to disrespect or undermine the needs of the vulnerable groups in our community, such as those struggling to pay their taxes. Doing so would make a difficult situation worse, and I'm worried that the committee, or maybe a few members of the committee, are moving in that direction. So I'd like to share some concerns and hopefully help promote an appreciation for the different sides of this financial dilemma. We need to understand and support each other. That's the goal. Concern number one. It is concerning when this claim is made. If Solschow-Votec can simply submit an assessment and the towns will just pay it, then we should just do the same with Whitman Hansen Regional School District. That is concerning for a couple reasons. First, it undermines the open communication and cooperation that we have with Solschow-Votec. The Whitman Select Board has a representative, Mr. Salvucci, on the Solschow-Votec School Committee. And just a month ago, Solschow-Votec lowered their assessment to the town by $11,000 because they got an increase in Chapter 70 local aid. To my knowledge, Whitman Hansen Regional School District has not done that in the past. In addition, when our Solschow-Votec enrollment decreases, our assessment actually is reduced, as it did last year. It was a negative 8% assessment. At Whitman Hansen Regional School District, the total enrollment has been decreasing for over 10 years, and we've never funded an assessment that was less than the previous year. That's a big deal. Lastly, the spirit of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District is to work collaboratively with both towns, not in opposition to them. Some tension is healthy, but advocating for an assessment that doesn't take into account the finite amount of funds that we have to share is dangerous. Remember that the school district's initial FY '26 assessment was about 9%. That was about $1.8 million. But last year, to put that in perspective, the total new revenue that we had to distribute to all town departments, including the schools, was less than $1 million. As you can see, simply paying the initial assessment would not be fair. It would have been devastating to town departments. Let's not do that. Let's work together to determine a funding that is fair for all. My second concern. Concern is written about the manner in which the towns use free cash. I'd like to clarify our practice. In Whitman, we have a financial policy that guides us. It specifically states, quote, "Revenue deficits will be avoided at all costs. To avoid any potential for such a deficit, estimates for local receipts generally will not exceed 85% of the prior year's actual collections without evidence of higher revenues that higher revenues are achievable." For instance, last year, we began the budget projection with about 85% of our excise tax. After running a trend analysis and reviewing the first commitment, which is billed in late February, we had a more precise information to help us adjust those numbers. In addition, Mary Beth Carter, our town administrator, has been extremely thorough about going through each department's budget, line by line, and squeezing them as much as possible. As a consequence, our certified free cash this year is just over $1 million, which is low for us. In any case, the town departments need revenue as much as the school district, but using free cash is not the answer. Strategically using a small amount of free cash on occasion seems appropriate, but putting pressure on the towns to use large amounts of free cash every year will make the situation worse, not better. For this reason, our financial policy also states, quote, "All current operating expenditures should be paid for with current operating revenues," end quote. Free cash and excess inefficiency is not an operating revenue. So we should do our best to limit the amount of free cash we use in the operating budget. Concern number three. It can be difficult to make an apples-to-apples comparison of the school district with a specific town department. For instance, medical insurance and retirement contributions are included in the school district assessment, but they are not included in the specific town budget. For Whitman, medical insurance and retirement contributions are listed at the bottom of Article 2 under Townwide Expenses. But it is fair to compare the town budget in its entirety with the school budget, the entire school budget. We both have similar budgetary pressures that make it difficult to manage. So in my opinion, it is equitable to say that a percent increase or decrease for the school district is proportionate to the percent increase for the entire town. But the school leadership and the school committee have traditionally not accepted that logic. Why? Because the whole time, this situation is a unique variable that is difficult to understand, respectfully. This is an important idea that warrants further analysis, and I'll connect that concept to my last concern. The point here is this. We need to be very careful when we compare funding to the school district and the town. Unfortunately, a partial understanding can lead to extreme opinions on both sides. And then concern number four. The final concern pertains to this question. Have we made educational progress at Whitman Hansen Regional School District? Or have the towns supported the school district? When thinking about this question, I found it helpful to analyze the progress, albeit slow progress, we've made over the past 13 years. Here's a quick comparison with the 2012 school year. In 2012, we had 202 teachers. At the start of last school year, we had 243 teachers. That's a significant increase. In 2012, the student-teacher ratio was 21 to 1. Last year, however, it was 14.2 to 1. That's a significant improvement. In 2012, the in-district-per-people expenditure was just over, well, just under $10,000. In 2023, it was just over $17,000. And the gap between us and the state average has been incrementally decreasing. And in 2012, our student enrollment was 4,320. Our enrollment dropped to 3,457 last year. That's a decrease of 863 students. This is important because our enrollment is directly tied to our funding. That was a huge obstacle for us to overcome. So during a long period of time, when our enrollment was decreasing, which is a significant obstacle, and the support from the state had plateaued, as a community, we were able to increase the size of our teaching staff, improve the student-teacher ratio, add full-day kindergarten, invest in the new middle school. I'll be done in just a sec.
It's past three minutes, way past three minutes.
I know.
Invest in the new middle school and in turn, provide a much better educational experience for our children. That is progress, and the claim otherwise is insulting to those who have sacrificed for the district. Now with these factors in mind...
Mr. Kane, are you getting close to the end? Okay, thank you.
Now with these factors in mind, consider the whole harmless situation. Since 2012, our enrollment has been dropping and our state aid has leveled off. Now, from our perspective, and this is where the tension lies, it seems that the state is not giving us enough money. But from the state's perspective, they're actually giving us too much money. Too much money because if they didn't hold us harmless, then our state aid would actually be reduced each year. So for years, we've been receiving too much state aid. For this reason, it is not reasonable to expect more money from the state to solve our problems. And honestly, we have to be somewhat grateful for the additional state aid that was given because it was one of the key variables that has allowed us to make slow progress over the last 13 years. I understand that that's not a popular opinion, but I do believe it's the truth. In closing, as a member of the Whitman Select Board, these are my current concerns. We should work together to figure out our assessment. We should do our best to limit the use of one-time money like free cash. We should be very careful about comparing our funding for the school district with the towns. And since we're going to ask our community to make sacrifices in the future, we should respect and honor the sacrifices that they made for us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Chair, before you go on, the rules of the order means if you let somebody talk that long, then the three minutes goes out the window. You can't hear it differently to anybody speaking.
Correct, yes. I know. Thank you. So next, we have Frank Malisi. Malisi, thank you.
Frank Malisi, 604 Brook Street. Full transparency here. My wife's actually one of the lunch ladies over at the high school, well, here at the high school. About a year ago, I walked up and I was at a school committee meeting. And I was talking to everybody here while I was on various town committees in the town of Hanson about how this lack of funding from the town meeting is not a town doesn't have money issue. It is more of a feeling within the town that the school committee has essentially white-knitted their way to a budget, right? They've been fighting their way for a budget, and they be damned what the taxpayers actually say. The school committee has two main responsibilities. The first main responsibility is obviously the student experience, right? Which everybody on this board, and I've seen and I've heard a lot, probably a lot more school committee meetings than I would like to, takes very seriously. Every single one of you, regardless of whether I've disagreed with you in the past or not, takes the student experience and their education super seriously. The second thing that is not taken as seriously outside of the town meeting timeframe is the budget. The budget is something for a $60 million department that needs to be reviewed every single meeting. Every single meeting it needs to be reviewed. When I was chair of the Camp Kawani Commission, I went in there when there was a huge deficit, and every single meeting we had, we reviewed the budget, every single meeting. And that was only a $360,000 budget, a lot smaller than the $60 million one that you have here. That's very important because that's the second main responsibility of a school committee. The superintendent is supposed to go through and build this budget, and you guys are supposed to look through the budget and make sure that the budget is being successful throughout the school year. And it's actually, some would argue, it's actually more important than the student experience because if you don't have that budget, you have situations like we have right now where the student experience is being severely impacted because that budget was not properly retained. I hope in the future, for the next year that's coming up, that the school committee will take this responsibility a little bit more seriously outside of the town meeting timeframe and really drill down in that budget at every school committee meeting that you guys have. Because I know you guys love this job, and I'm sorry that you're going through this particular situation right now. And you all are really impactful for our students, and we get that. But sometimes, the student experience isn't the most important part of the school committee job. It has to be the budget. And I really hope that people will make more of an effort this year to reach out to the communities and try to mend those bonds with the select boards and the town meetings to really get the community on their back. The Solschow-Votec building went through in Hanson with flying colors. And I remember last town meeting, the Hanson town meeting voted down the school district overwhelmingly with their budget. That's a stark difference, and a lot of people would say that that was because Hanson doesn't support the schools. No, that's not the case at all. It's the fact that the Hanson honestly didn't support the school committee. They didn't support the budget that was being pushed out from the school committee. They thought it was a militant budget and that they would just be damned what everybody else thinks. And that's pretty clear in the way that we overwhelmingly supported a tax increase from the Solschow-Votec building that we have there. And the other thing is the transparency. Every document that you guys are looking at tonight, whether it be budget documents or the agenda, I know you guys post the agenda, should be posted publicly. Every single document that you guys have that you're looking at here tonight during a meeting should be on the website so everybody here in the meeting can see it. So I mean, I can't make a motion, obviously, because I'm not on the school committee, but I would love if we can get two motions. One motion would be that all the documents that you guys hand out, your packets are posted publicly before the meeting so the audience has a chance to review them. And the second one is I would like you guys on the next agenda to put the lunch lady's requests on your meeting. And they were being way too nice about what they were talking about this. And you know, like I said, full disclosure, my wife's a lunch lady, and I've met a lot of the lunch ladies over at the high school. Their hours got cut, right? And they're self-funded through their own program through the USDA. They work extremely hard. They work just as hard as teachers that are there. They're going through, and some of these kids have a tough day in the classroom. They get to go to lunch. They get to see the smiling face of these lunch ladies, and sometimes that's the best part of their day. Some kids, on the other hand, don't get meals for breakfast or for dinner, and that lunch is the only meal that they get. And what do they see when they go there? They see the wonderful lunch ladies that we have across the district. They make 30% sometimes less than what other towns make. In Pembroke, East Bridgewater, they all make $21 an hour to start. That's not even with seniority. So I would request that somebody makes a motion to put that on the next meeting agenda to get this closed out so we can support our lunch ladies also.
All right, thank you very much, Frank. And next up, we have Kevin from the WHGA.
It's Sidney McGann, too. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. So again, continued concerns, right? How do we get here? Where are we now? Where are we going? What does fiscal '27 look like? What is the process? We are still in the process of negotiating our contracts as well, B, C, and D. And we'd certainly stand in solidarity with you folks and help you any way you can. Indeed, very important part, foundation, if you would, of our school. Couple of things as far as not only negotiations, a couple of comments were made about some UDB personnel and so forth. So some of those things, right, are part of that process. Some of the personnel issues, of course, are connected, if you would, to the superintendent, not necessarily to the committee. So just kind of a caution on that. And I think there was one more comment.
Just the curriculum coordinators. Those are all bargaining partners, and they're all under contract. So hiring, firing, all of that, hours, and working, and teaching classes, that's all impact bargaining. That's all in the contract. They're following the letter of the contract. So if anybody has any questions about anything, you can feel free to reach out, and the contracts are online. But just to know that some of that information was not correct.
And my hope, getting into the business meeting, and again, there's some legal things out there as far as what you can say and what you can't. Hopefully, by the next business meeting, you'll be able to make some sort of a comment. That's optimistic, but hopefully that will happen. So hopefully, a lot of our questions will be answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that is the end of our public comment and the end of our agenda. We have a meeting next Wednesday at 6:30 in the library. Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yep. Okay, yep.
Hi, everyone. If you don't remember me, I'm Ella Leach, and I planned to walk out here last week. Today, I'm not here so much in sadness, but in anger and disgust. Anger that I had to say goodbye, anger that so many people had their safe spaces...
As I have seen in the past meetings, there has been very little to no answer to our questions. I understand that this is a big and stressful role for the superintendent to play, but if it was in his best interest to do something to fix our deficit, things would have already been done. We would have at least had a better communication or he would have resigned. The people of Whitman and Hanson are the ones being affected by this. Therefore, we should know what's happening. If you don't want backlash, put effort to fix our school. I hope you're watching Jeff Seismannak because you need to step up and fill up your responsibilities. Excuse my unsophisticated language, but Jeff, dude, man up or go home. And I really, really hope that I put that simply enough. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, for everyone that came out to speak tonight. Um, as I mentioned, we are having our next meeting next Wednesday in the library at 6:30. Um, it'll be a business meeting, so there'll be more, it will be, um, there'll be more information given at that time. The eighth grade trip will be on the, is on the agenda for the, the third. It was Okay. All right, yeah, so we, um, that, we will add those things to the agendas, a future agenda. But for now, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice holiday.